We're good. All right, we're gonna call the Public Utilities Commission meeting for order if we can all stand for the pledge allegiance. But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America which stands one nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, do we have anyone zooming in?
We do, there's someone by name Alex.
No, uh, no public comment though?
If Alex wants to do public comment.
Alex, if you want to do public comment, now's the time to do it.
Hi, I'm actually here representing the client for forty-eight and fifty Nashville Road.
Okay. All right. Uh, minutes, did you guys have a chance to read the minutes from June twelfth? Oh, do we have any correspondence Kathy?
No.
All right, you guys read the minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes unless you guys have any objections.
One minute.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
All right. Any, any comments?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. And I'll spend. Uh, financials, Brett?
Um, both water and sewer currently in a surplus position. Obviously, like we talked about last, um, we haven't paid the sewer bill, uh, which would put us in a deficit compared to the billing, but when you look at versus the revenue, uh, sewer assessment brings it by and you just can't sit there right now because, uh, Paul is still working on trying to get that all situated for the new bill. So we've just paid this.
Did we correct?
They did not.
So we're still working on correcting the problem we were having with the both?
Yeah, so she's still working on trying, so all the bills got out, she just can't get the reporting today.
Okay.
Um, supposedly water and sewer, the supposed to go live in TDS in the middle of August. I think that's the latest update, were you covered on that?
Uh, yeah, we're reading meters next week and we think, uh, the plan is to get them obviously both squared away together and until we are, you know, exactly the same penny to penny, then we won't switch over. So we're getting closer, hopefully August more.
So even if you, so the collected for the sewer without all the sewer assessment because we're missing the last six months, um, we're at three point, almost three point four billion and the billing's three point one five. So even that gap is even bigger on sewer. Uh, so last year we gave the sewer, uh, collected three point nine million dollars. Um, and sewer uses up four hundred thousand this year. So when all the sewer assessment comes in, it should be higher cover the Danbury piece of it. Uh, I did, um, talk to the finance director of the city of Danbury last week. Uh, his response is, yeah, that department's still a mess and they don't have the billing. So.
Now, are they able to retroactively bill us or is this like? Like, how's it gonna work?
The last bill we got from that was estimated. So at some point we'll get a true up. We also haven't gotten the estimated bill for twenty-five yet. So if we don't get it by a certain time, I will book a journal entry and put it into twenty-five. An estimate of the million dollars, whatever. I have months to do that in essence until we go to close that year. Um, but yeah, the biggest concern is like with our MIUs, if we run estimated too long, you worry about what the true up is. Uh, obviously we're not necessarily worried about if the true up is to the good for us. It's not like with NIUs, if you had to give somebody a big credit, that's a problem for us. If they owe us, if it's less, that's great for us. Um, but I do worry at some point when they get the true numbers in, we could be in essence, almost three years behind of what the actual number's been.
Are you carrying a contingent each year or are you not able to?
Yeah, I can. So what I'll do at some point is I will book that. I didn't book anything additional. We just took the amount that they gave the estimated because it's been running between nine hundred thousand and a million. It seems like one year it's nine hundred, the next it's a million fifty, the next it's nine fifty. It jumps around in that range. So last year they estimated they gave us, I think it was right around a million or nine fifty. So we booked that.
And it varies with the flow. So.
Um, so at some point, we'll book whatever, however much we can if we don't have a bill.
So is, are there meters not running right now? Or like, I don't understand like why they're, what like, I mean, they have to know how much we're putting in, right?
Yes, they do that. But as far as them putting together what the overall O and M total costs and what our percentage is, we haven't gotten. So we still have no clue. We, no. We would always get at the beginning of the year, like October, they would give us the estimate. And then we would true up before the end of the, you know, from the previous year and then we'd either have a credit or we'd owe a little bit and so we would stay current basically year to year. But now we're on our, this is two years in a row now.
They must, they must have an idea what percentage allocation they're gonna charge, right? For them to come up with an estimated bill.
Yeah, our, our percentage will, our, it'll be our flow compared to the total flow. So they should know the ratio of us. I don't know what all their, what all the expenses are.
Yeah, I think that's the piece like for them, I'm sure they have the flow information. It's just the guy that passed away that used to do it, apparently never taught anybody else how to do it. And they must not be in a huge rush to get their money because.
I mean, they're collecting a million bucks a year.
Yeah, but that's a million dollars that we're sitting on right now that I'm not, I'm not gonna just send them a check with them. I'm sending them something. So.
And do you have, do you have the ability to look at their books to make sure that everything like in the agreement?
I don't know if we've ever gotten to that level because honestly, we haven't gotten a real bill in three years. Whatever it is. Uh.
Which is a lot of times, you know, if a landlord charges you a percentage of total in a big strip mall, right?
Yeah.
You're entitled to say, I wanna see the expenses.
You should be on it, what they're doing.
Right, you know, and I'm not saying Danbury's not above board, but I mean, it would make sense that when they do determine, especially if it's not on our favor, that we look at their billing and we wanna know, you know, what are we getting billed for?
Yeah, if suddenly when we get our true up, if it jumped from nine fifty to a million or like one point two, absolutely, we wanna see, give us the back of all. It usually, it usually comes with a little packet.
Yeah, it's like.
But it's not, we'd have to go over there probably, which if it was, if the true up was really bad for us, we would do that, you know? Uh, and if their true up says our bill is eight hundred, I think we say thank you, we've lost. You know, but we just need to get the bill at some point.
Okay.
It's the same thing with the plans. We have to take the dime towards that. So.
All right. You guys have any questions on the financial report?
No.
We're good. All right. Do I need a motion to approve the financial? All right, invoices?
I think we just have the one.
Just had the.
Okay, I didn't make a copy of the spreadsheet. So it's, it's the Kovacs construction for Berke.
I'll make a motion and we, uh, approve the and, um, invoice for Kovacs and the minimum of two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents.
Have a second.
Is that a catch-up?
Give me a second, then we could discuss it.
Excellent.
All right, go ahead.
Is that a catch-up?
This is for the past month.
Last month or whatever.
They've been running between two hundred is about, about what the number's been, give or take. There's been bigger numbers and there's been a couple smaller, a hundred fifty, a hundred and seventy. Depends on what they completed to then get to a position to pay.
One to, one sixty roughly last month.
Yeah, one sixty.
Where do you think, where are you going to put the end of this?
Uh, I, I gave a summary last time. I mean, we have change orders. So there's probably about two hundred thousand and maybe two hundred six thousand in change orders. But there's about a hundred and forty-five thou, about a hundred and fifty thousand in items that are, are, we're not gonna end up paying. When you add up, uh, a couple of allowances, they're not using rock excavation, certain things that they didn't use. Um, so our contingency when we started was, um, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And I, I think it's gonna be basically uh, I, I had it in last month's, um, we're, we're over two hundred and fifty thousand by contingency. So we're gonna come in on them at this point.
Okay.
Uh, and just, uh, I assume right here it's just to get the other time for this.
Marius is on vacation, so I'm assuming that's why we not get one.
Okay. Um, all right, any other comments on the invoice? All right, all those in favor of paying, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. Uh, new business, uh, I'm assuming we don't have any new business.
Right.
Let's go to the director's report.
All right, just a couple, I wanted to give an update on our sewer allocation. Um, the banks basically are of our three areas. Our, our Paul Street Bank available is a hundred and forty-five thousand. Uh, Payne Road is almost seventy-two thousand. And Berkshire is ten thousand. That's kind of what it's been. Um, Payne Road, we were at a one twenty-five, we're down to about the seventy-two. And that was those two big condo units that, that, uh, developments that went in. And Paul Street, we started out with the bank of two hundred thousand. So we're at a hundred and forty-five at this point.
That's all we have left.
Well, the banks were set up to be fifty percent of what we had left over. So we had a balance of four hundred, they set the bank at two hundred. So we have a hundred and forty-five out of the two hundred, but we had the other two hundred. And that's gonna vary as the flows.
Sure.
But I looked at our flows too and, and they're really Paul Street flows compared to the two hu, twenty sixteen flows that we started the bank with were about the same. And since I've been here, the flows have been a bit up and down, but our last twelve months, the flows have been under a million. It's about nine hundred and twenty thousand, which is about what it was in twenty sixteen.
Do you notice an increase in the flows with the heavy rain or anything like that?
Um, when we had the real several months worth of heavy rains, I think it was a year ago, September through that whole fall, yes. And we were kind of pegging the, uh, the, uh, sewer trump line that goes through the swamp um, behind like Paul Bowe Field. And so we, we've studied that one. That's the one that we just studied recently. The flows are down again. So, um, I would equate it, yeah, when we get some of those heavy rains, I'm, I'm thinking we're getting more maybe inflow, which is like maybe leaking into manholes than it is infiltration leaking into pipes. We've been lining pipes as we go, but I mean, we replaced manholes behind the tracks, along the tracks. We're gonna try to do these manholes as well and raise them up, keep them above the hydraulic line.
Sure.
All right. So I think we're doing, uh, you know, as well as we can be doing at this point.
Okay.
Um, one other, um, we put in the budget to do the, uh, an updated sewer capacity study. Um, that was all done by Ty and Bond over the years. So my inclination was since they have a lot of those records, we'd be probably better off just having them do the next update. So I, I, I asked them for a, um, um, you know, a, a, a summary of an overview of what they could do for us. Um, I'm gonna ask them to maybe come in at the next meeting and then we can decide if we just wanna go forward with Ty and Bond or go out for bid. I, I don't know that we're gonna do really any better go out for bid. Usually with engineering, you're just getting the qualifications, then the prices. So um, they're gonna be as qualified as Weston and Sampson or anybody else.
All right.
That was it.
Anything else?
For director's report, no.
Okay. We don't need to accept your report, right?
No.
So under whole business, um, I see we have forty-eight fifty Nashville Road. Um, I really like to table this until we have, uh, Dan and Dino here. Uh, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we table forty-eight and fifty Nashville Road for a second. Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, MIU replacements?
Uh, last month was ninety-one, now we're, we only got six of them done this month. A lot of work orders, but I said, we're moving slowly toward it. Um, there's gonna, they're gonna start reading next week, which tells me that maybe there's gonna be a few more added to this month, but right now we're at eighty-five.
So we're down to eighty-five that needs to be replaced. Good.
Yes.
Lot better from where we started.
Yep.
Uh, PUC Capital Projects, unless, did you guys have any questions on MIUs? Okay. PUC Capital Projects, that a summary?
Okay, Berke, uh, pay level, we're at about eighty-seven percent. Uh, this past month, uh, we have the filter media installed in the three filter tanks. Uh, they've been continuing on the installation of the chemical room pumps and piping and the FRP grading. Uh, HVAC ductwork and louvers were installed, propane tie-in and regular things installed. We did concrete sidewalks, splash pads and a, and a curve valve pad were poured. Site grading and seating. And, uh, come upcoming, um, the, the filter vendor is gonna be on site, uh, starting Monday. I think we have him for, I think for about a week and we're gonna get the, the media conditioned. So we'll be able to get the chlorine and the media to get it activated, uh, do some backwashing and getting closer to being able to, you know, start filtering water. Um, on the Skoda project, we are waiting for a signature from the commissioner uh, uh, of deep to authorize, uh, the, the agreement we're gonna have with them. And, um, also I'm working on the EPA grant application. Um, and on the subs, uh, the, uh, sanitary, uh, sewer evaluation for sub area thirteen, deep received our grant application and they're starting to process the agreement. We've signed it and we're again waiting now for that commissioner to sign it and we'll be able to then submit payment requests.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions, guys?
Um, yeah.
Or gee, doesn't matter who wants to go first.
Does the version thing, uh, how are we making out with that?
We, we got it filed and we had to go to a public notice. We gotta wait thirty days to see if there's any public, uh, comments. So it hit the paper June twentieth. So we're approaching, uh, what, our second week, uh, two more weeks. And then I think the EEP staff will be able to basically get it processed for us.
Yeah, a question I had last month, I asked him about the sewer pump that we had to put in because of the elevation shots were wrong. We were gonna check it out.
What site?
The sewer pump that we had to put in on the the station because the surveyor shot that line wrong. And we had to put a pump and chamber.
Was it a sump pump?
I don't know what the hell, it was an extra cost.
To get water out?
And he said, and the guy shot the line and was off. We had to put a chamber and a pump.
Not Ray and Adel, what, what location, what?
At the water treatment.
What sewer pump?
Down at the water treatment plant, when the guy shot the line, the line was, you had to put a pump and chamber. I should have asked what, what's your, gonna give me the price?
Okay, um, I, I didn't make note of that. I'm sorry, uh, the change order that we had to do?
Yeah.
Um, let's should be listed in here. The last page of the invoice.
The only reason why, the only reason why I'm thinking of it up and determining is strictly a cost. From a guy screwing up and we got an extra in heaven because of the surveyor shot the line wrong.
Well, I don't necessarily disagree, um.
I just wanna know what the cost was.
Right here. Here it is, elevation discrepancy for well pump. Uh, eight thousand eight hundred eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six is what, but I don't know if any of this other stuff is.
I, I'll, I'll have to pull out. I didn't, I don't have it with me here, so I'd have to pull it out.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I guess, I don't know what the total was.
Okay.
So if you look on your last page, it says right there that. But they don't really, like, I don't know whether any of the other items on there uh, were, I mean, obviously water gear is nothing, abandoned two west, so that's nothing. Con, now some of the electrical conduit could be tied to that, right?
You think because it's a change order, it's related, it'd all be part of the same change order, right? You wouldn't do it like.
Again, I.
Generally, I hear think it means I don't know. So generally I don't say I think, I wait until I know. So I guess we'll just let.
I've gotta get each one of these. There's a write-up for each one of these change orders.
All right. I mean, you could obviously talk to them, find out, was that the total cost and then we can deal with it.
I'm not fucking wrong.
No, I understand. You totally right.
Some, some of these things may have been the contractor, uh, made a different suggestion on something to do different there or there might've been, um, a misinterpretation of what was on the plan versus, you know, what needs to be put in. There's, there's various reasons for it.
Yeah, but when we got it, the surveyor shot the line, that's what it's all about.
All right, I'll have to look for something.
They shot the elevations? The elevation flaw?
Yeah, yeah.
Nice, we'll do it.
They had to put that in.
I know we made a change with the, with the vault and they combined two vaults into one vault.
Would that, would that necessitate a sump pump? That would be.
No, it didn't require a sump pump, but it was, there was extra excavation.
It did require a pump. That's when you state.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta go back and look at them.
Well, let's, let's talk about it. Can you have that for us next meeting?
Sure. I mean. I'm not exactly sure which one, so I'll have to just go.
Well, it's, I would say it's the elevation discrepancy for the well pump.
That's right. That one, there was, it didn't require a pump. It, it required lowering some piping that had to get put in, so it had enough cover.
Maybe that's what we're talking.
I'm not sure, Jeremy. All I'm saying is he brought it up, there was a change order because the elevation was shot wrong and they had to put a pump and chamber in.
Well, no one's arguing.
It was said at this.
Yeah, I, I don't remember. I mean, we, we have, uh.
I, I might be old, but I do have a break memory.
You're not that old.
Thank you.
I wouldn't say it.
Um, I don't see anything here about a chamber. I mean, maybe, have they done it yet?
If it's on it, yeah, yeah, all of this has been done.
No, no, what I'm saying is, is he's saying that we needed an extra chamber and a pump, but I don't see anything on here. All I see is elevation discrepancy for well pump. So that you said just could be that they had to bury the lines, did you?
Yeah, I think that's, that's what that was.
So what he's saying is, can we find out if there was some, and I don't wanna speak for you, there was some, there was some mistake on elevations that necessitated some sort of some.
An extra chamber.
Correct. That, that, we get it set after the next meeting, that'd be great.
I'll have to go through all of these.
I'm not, I'm not reading the dead horse, I wanna say.
I'm fine with it. I, I agree with you. If, if they, if they made a mistake, we should talk about it. Let's just find out what it was. All right, great. Uh, do you have any of our favorite subject, the PFAS class action?
Yeah, actually I do.
Good news?
Yeah, we, we actually received a payment.
A payment?
Oh, wow.
Two hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
What was the payment for?
I couldn't tell you. So I have an inquiry into them.
They just sent a check?
They did for testing, you think, or something?
It was for the PFAS claims, but they don't give you a whole lot of detail.
So when I was going through, it would've been a May bank rec. There was two amounts.
In late June.
Middle of June, don't even, you know, late June.
Okay.
Uh, then I noticed there's two payments, one for a dollar, which is there just like testing.
Testing.
And then they sent two hundred and eighty-two thousand, whatever.
Would the state send it?
The feds. So when the state sends the money.
It's probably the claims administrator who's handling this for the entire country.
But like whenever the feds or some of this money comes in, they don't tell us what's coming, they just send it. It's the craziest thing.
So there, there's a claim for three M and there's a claim for DuPont. And now they added a claim for Tyco and BASF. Okay? So there's gonna be a capital cost component and an O and M cost component. And they're gonna give you money over like a ten-year period at different percentages. So the first year, from what I can, what I read, it was gonna be sixty-seven percent of the capital cost component.
So they're saying the capital, the repair list would be under six hundred thousand.
So my question to them is, explain to me how you arrived at the two hundred eighty-two? Is it three M or is it DuPont? Is it the capital? Is it the O and M? What percentage? Cause I'm trying to back, I'd like to know what our total number is.
What do you think the costs are, if we have to mitigate it, what would it cost to mitigate the PFAS in our system?
The capital is gonna probably be more than half a million. Two ninety, if it's sixty-seven percent. We're probably looking at, yeah.
So my question would be is, if we accept this money, are we accepting a settlement that might not be to our advantage?
I, I don't think there was gonna be a way for us to know and we'd have to then separately litigate it if we didn't join the, the class action. So at the time we said, let's do a class action.
You're just gonna keep this in a PFAS account and let it set.
And use it for PFAS expenses, exactly.
Yeah, so we set up a bank account with an account savings bank. Then when this money comes in, we're just gonna put it there, mark it there, let it gain some interest. And then whenever we go to spend it, we'll spend what we got from it plus whatever interest we earned it.
Now, I've already submitted some paperwork for a congressionally directed spending grant, that EPA grant that I've gotten for Berke and for Skoda. We put something together to submit for PFAS.
What was the percentage you mentioned? Was it like, it has to be under four percent or something? I forgot the number you put on.
The, 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 uh, contaminant level that we have to meet, it, it's four parts per trillion.
Four part, I were, you don't have any idea where we're at?
Yeah, we're like between four and a half and six.
So we gotta do something.
So if they made the limit eight, we would have been fine.
But they made it four.
They made it four. And then I think the new administration came in and I think they're gonna hold, what I'm hearing, they're gonna hold the four for the two, the two PFAS that they're looking at. They're gonna hold that and I think they're gonna make some other changes, but.
How long will the engineering and all that take?
Well, we have to comply, the original law said, uh, twenty twenty-nine. And I think the new admin was coming in and I think they were gonna extend it to twenty thirty-one. Um, it's.
When would you recommend actually looking at it and talking about engineering and what, what it's gonna require? Like, how big a project is it?
It, it's.
Is it like filters that you have to install? Like, it's not like the Berke well, right? It's more like.
It's gonna be similar to that. It'll be some kind of pressure vessel, like a tank.
Wow.
With, with either like granular or activated carbon as the media or some kind of, uh, ion exchange and like a water softener is like an ion exchange. But there're gonna be pros and cons with both, whether or not you have a, a wastewater stream you gotta now deal with. Because if you have to backwash and then get rid of that concentrated water, now you're pushing that PFAS somewhere else.
Do you have to do like an infiltrator system or something where you're doing like almost like a separate leaching field on it?
I don't think you put it in the ground. Um, like the carbon would absorb it. And I think what happens is when it gets spent, you think Calgon would come back in, pull out your carbon, bring it up to wherever their facility is, they incinerate it and then they give you back your carbon. They kinda keep everyone's carbon even before PFAS was around. They, each utility that was using carbon, they kept it separate, incinerated it and then they got it back to you. So there's probably more design information that we have to gather before we, we would probably have to do a pilot test to figure out what's the best way to go.
Right now it's bad.
Right, right. It's, yeah, not good. Uh, but I don't think it's something we'll be doing like this year or next year, but I think, you know, not long thereafter, yes.
But we don't wanna be in a situation where if you have to do it like thirty-one, everyone's supposed to does it because all the towns are playing, you know? Catch up all at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, they could've done, they could've done things a little differently where, you know, if your contaminant level was above fifty, you, you had to comply by this date. If you're between fifty and, and twenty, you comply by that date. And if you're under twenty, you can, this way you spread it out a little bit because the engineering companies are all gonna be booked. The companies that make the steel tanks are all gonna be booked. The media people are gonna all be booked, so it's.
We're not. We're, right now we spend like an extra fifty-nine thousand dollars in a change order for Berke.
Yeah, we put extra piping in.
Yeah. Um, I think the thought would be, we're not gonna touch the two eighty-two, we just got to pay ourselves back for that sixty. But at some point at this thing is, we get enough money, we buy, but right now I think we leave it alone because the sixty's part of the law.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we have to do anything just yet. Um, but the other thing is Berke, we, we never, when you had to do the testing, we didn't really have the well in place. So we've only collected one sample.
Okay.
Berke, the number was around two.
That could offset it.
So it may turn out that we don't have to treat at Berke. And if we only have to treat at Maple, I think one well is doing better than the other well. So maybe if, when you use Maple, you use more of the good well and less and you blend them, you might be under four. So there may be ways. But if you're gonna have to ever rely on the full amount of, of Maple, then you probably should have a treatment.
Well, I think you want, you wanna comply anyway.
Oh, you you, yeah, you wanna comply, of course. So there's, there's a lot of unknowns yet to figure out what exactly do we gotta do, and once I have Berchtesgaden up and running. We'll collect some PFAS samples. You know, quarterly to kind of get an idea over the course of a year, seasonally. Are the numbers changing or are they still well under four?
Okay. Great, well, thanks for the update.
Yep.
Utility supervisors report adding cleanup.
Hey, um. I'm sure everybody is aware that we had a fatality in Mount Tom, but just wanna make sure. Uh, yes, it was our property, but it wasn't Dan Barry, Dan Barry did recovery. Um. Uh. It's really, there's, there's nothing more you can tell, they were in there trespassing. And when they, they were swimming, one of them went under. By the time they got, they were able to get uh make contact to get some uh emergency services up there. I'm sure it took more time, but the the. The person was under for two hours, they brought him, they uh. They worked him as soon as they got him out, and I think he ended up passing in hospital.
Do we routinely check to make sure there are no trespassing signs and everything's up there?
Yes, actually, I think it was three years ago, we went through and put a pole that opens up and we put rocks on the side of the road and said that they had no place to park. But they got in there, it's, you you could tell there's a beaten out path where they were. One of the little coves in there. Um, but no, it is posted, it's posted heavy. Um, there's no parking signs on both sides of the road, uh, the Eureka side is posted, the Mount Tom side is posted. Don't even know what more to say. Uh, so I was up there, myself was up there. Yeah, I don't know what more to really say, just.
It's a tragedy for the channel, I mean, it's just a tragedy.
Um. Leak survey was completed, we came up with seven leaks over the past month. Uh, three, four were on customer's side, three were on our side, everything taken care of. Uh, at the same time, we uh, this month, we changed three check valves in South Street Station. Uh, well, well needed. Uh, we're gonna get uh some spares to have there, uh, we didn't realize how easy they were gonna be to change, I thought it was gonna be a lot more involved. Uh, they had all three of them done in about two hours, the only thing that stunk about it was it took two to eight weeks just to get these check valves. Uh, delivered to us or made in delivery. Uh, two engines replaced, one in two, two not forty-nine Greenwood Avenue and the other one at fourteen Ball Street at the station. Uh, I've got two bids out for Midway. Uh, one is to JJ Brennan, the other one is to Dave Tinker, waiting for them to get back to me. Uh, on the sewer side, we have three wet wells cleaned, uh, we did Berkshire, Stony Hill one and Ball Street. Uh, again, we do that, try to do that quarterly, do the ones that are worse first. Uh. Also on the sewer side, uh, we had a backup on Main and, uh, excuse me. Excuse me, uh, Maple Avenue and Maple Avenue Extension right there were. The north and south crossings are. Uh, it didn't, it didn't bypass, I was actually out there Monday pulling manholes, just looking around a little bit and. We found a blockage. Uh, it's the old line that's supposedly very level that goes right in front of the old sand pit out on to Maple Avenue Extension. So we cleaned it, we're gonna clean that old line out, uh, good. And then we're gonna camera it to see if it's a belly of the line. That's kind of what we're leading toward. Uh, but that's like right where the cau- this used to be for Bethel Sand and Gravel, if if you can imagine where it was. Uh, that was the line we had the issue with. Uh. Two weeks ago, a highway dug up a sinkhole on Castle Hill. They thought it might have been their drainage pipe, but it's somewhere where our sewer lines are. Uh, that were installed on Castle Hill, so we're, we're, let me keep an eye on that. Uh, the only, if if it sinks again, I think what we're gonna do is go right down to the main. Sucker, because they, they didn't put any burns in, from what I understand, that's why it was explained to me. And. The water that comes off of a Castle Hill has washed out, or we're thinking it washed out underneath the. Lateral going to one house and that's where we get our sinkhole. So my thought is that if it happens again, we're gonna go in with a back to truck, take all the stone out of there and put some uh, some other uh suitable material. Underneath the lateral. And hopefully that'll correct it from them, if you remember, right, we had problems, that was phase two. We had a problem down at Payne Road right in front of Jacobo Witness, which. So we're just kind of watching it, heavy rains, whether that's the issue or not, we don't know. But we're keeping an eye on that. Uh. Paving wise, they did PT Barnum this past week, so we had the red, right, all the risers done. Uh, they did finish Harley Bill and uh Sky Edge. And. Of course, the crowd, yeah, that's, that's all I have. But it's actually been a pretty busy one.
Yeah, Kelly, that's the one they gravelled the sewer line. And they went around the manhole with the gravel.
Down low, yes.
Yeah, and they made a curtain.
Yeah. Yeah. Where the drop was.
Yep.
Yeah. But this is up more, this is where. Like, I can't remember the name of the road, uh, where vodka's outskies was.
Uh, Hollyberry.
Hollyberry, it starts at the top of Hollyberry, goes down through the properties, then it goes into Castle, uh, Castle Hill. And just at the bottom, it's very deep, it's about eight feet deep right there. And like I said, we saw, it was developed in a sinkhole at the main. And then another one popped up past a couple weeks or maybe probably a month in front of one of the homes where there's a lateral. That was never tied in, we cambered it, we found there was nothing wrong with the installation. So we're leaning toward. It it could be from some sort of washout because it stunk, because it didn't put the burns in. So, that's uh.
Well, thank you. I will. Irritation. Richie? I need you to circle it.
His finger looks good.
Follow, I know he's busy right now.